Okay, the council had already opened the meeting and we had moved to closed session. So, we are through with closed session and have now come back to our regular meeting. So, I'll turn it over to the city attorney to report out from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Direction was given to staff on all items for the closed session.
Okay. With that, I will reemphasize that all councilmembers are present with the exception of Councilmember Drossit who is excused. So, we will move to the invocation by Pastor Condit, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
First of all, I want to wish my great grandson a happy birthday. For just a little bit, I'd sing that song if I could all this bunch back here to join me. But, Chance, I do wish you a happy birthday. Our Father in heaven, we want to thank you this evening one more time for your love and your grace that makes provisions for our lives and our living. We thank you for our city council. We pray your divine blessings upon their lives, their homes, and their families. We pray the decisions that they make tonight be right, and be right in the eyes of God, and be right in the eyes for the people. We just, we love you today. We give you praise. And again, we ask you to bless this city of Series. Lord, we need the overseeing and the oversight of our great God and our Father in heaven to make sure that we're living a life that's right in the sight of God. Give us your peace, your love. Help us to love one another as you loved us. That's what you told us to do. And by this shall all men know that you're my disciples, if you have love one to another. And I know probably most of us here tonight profess to be Christians. So, help us to love one another. Help this council to love one another. I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
God bless you. I'm going to excuse myself. Get out of here.
I'm going to walk to the flag though.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we live in, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you. We have one presentation this evening as a proclamation declaring September as National Preparedness Month in the city of Series. So, Mr. Wise, I do have a proclamation. I'll go ahead and read here. Declaring September as National Preparedness Month in the city of Series, whereas the 2019 theme for National Preparedness Month is Prepared, Not Scared, Be Ready for Disasters. And National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Series to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency's READY Campaign, Citizens Corp., and other federal, state, local, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public activities in preparation for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of Series, and all citizens are urged to make preparations a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And by participating in National Preparedness Month in September 2019, the city of Series has the opportunity to join and support the nation and state of California in strengthening community and regional resiliency. And whereas all citizens of Series are encouraged to participate in citizens' preparedness activities and asked to visit the websites of the READY Campaign at www.reddy.gov, which includes links to 13 languages and become more prepared. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Chris Viera, Mayor of the city of Series, hereby proclaim September 2019 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a resilient community. Proclaim this ninth day of September 2019.
Mayor and city council, it's an honor to be here as always. As the mayor mentioned, September is National Preparedness Month. And part of that, we are, if you go to our website, go under Fire, go under National Preparedness, we have our webpage set up for this month's event. And each week, we'll be releasing new information, and there's going to be four modules. So, we're going into our second week. Last week was, the topic was save early for disasters. This week is make a plan for disasters. The third week is going to be teach youth to prepare for disasters. And finally, on the fourth week, it's get involved in your community's preparedness. When there's a natural disaster or man-made disaster, our citizens are going to be on their own for the first 48 to 72 hours. So, we have to be prepared to help ourselves. And if you go to the website the mayor mentioned, you can go to hashtag be ready, hashtag prepared, not scared. And prepared, not scared is the theme for this year's National Preparedness. Along with that, we are currently, we just started the Foundation for Updating the City's Emergency Operation Plan. So, I have a meeting with Stanislaus County OES next week to start the foundation for that. So, I'll be bringing that to the council in the future on updating our emergency operation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move to citizens' communications to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I think I have a couple of speaker cards. So, I'll call those first. And then, if there's anyone else that would like to speak, I would ask that you come forth and state your name for the record. Also, at the dais, you'll see that there are a green, a yellow, and a red light. It'll start off at green. When you get, I believe, down to a minute left or somewhere around there, it'll go to yellow. And then, when it turns red, your five minutes would be up. And I would ask that you end your remarks so that we can at least hear from everyone. So, at this time, the first person is Eric Domon, I believe it is?
Good evening. My name is Eric Domon. What I would like to say, August 21st, on Wednesday, I went to Walmart to do some shopping. It was about 6:00, and I was riding my bike. And then, I parked my bike right in front of Walmart. I bought the lock from Walmart. I locked my bike right there, and I went to do some shopping in Walmart, by Mitchell Road. And I came out, they stole my bike. So, it's a, you know, it's a bike. It's not like, you know, emergency or everything. But, the problem is, when it's small, we should take care of it. And then, you know, not only my bike getting stolen. So, the guys coming in there, they're just stealing all the bikes and stuffs. And I was fixing a bike for the church. I was going to give the bike to them anyway. But, they should let me fix them first before they steal them. They stole them anyway. So, the point is, I like know where is it safe to park your bike here? Because you guys have these little round circle where you can park the bikes? And we lock them, we chain them, we do everything. And the guys come, we bolt cut it, they cut them. And not only on this side, but even on Penndale area. Couple were having their little hamburgers in McDonald's. The guys came by with the bolt cutters, they cut the chain, they took the bikes. So, it's a small situation where they stealing bikes. I just wanted to let them know. I called up the police. They told me talk to the computer. So, I talked to the computer and stuff. And that makes sense, right? Because this is our skies, this is, you know, people come stealing your lawnmower and stuff, small stuff.
Sure.
But, if you know that outside the circle, they hitting us guys, right? I live on, over there by Walmart, by East Gate area. It's pretty nice housing and stuff. So, the guys drive by, they egg the houses, they drive real fast, you know what I mean? Half of the time, they just burn rubble, right? So, we the citizens, we can do something because this is where we live. I don't know where you guys live. So, I called up Walmart. I told Walmart, right now, you guys get your guys' light on. What you guys wasting light for? You guys should watch, put on a camera. It's supposed to be safe. We park our equipment there and without have to worry about when you shopping. So, I believe not only my bike being stolen, but a lot of people's bike being stolen. Another thing, this is my green light still going. When you going on Hatch Road in Mitchell, before you get on the bridge right by the donut shop, McDonald's over here, and, you know, the donut shop. When you making the left turn, I seen three 18-wheelers turn over over there. Big rigs turning over. And it's going to happen again. So, what he got to do, you got to fix that area. Because over here, up in Mitchell area by Chevron, it's a nice opening, right? They coming down. And then, when they come down to reach Hatch Road, it's bottlenecking. And so, the big trucks, when they making their left turn, they flipping over. And so, that's what's my concern. Because I, you know, we got to be part of Series. So, would be nice if we can put, somebody can put one bike there and put something electronic. The guys take them, we can tell them for, maybe they can go to church or something. You know what I mean? Put them in the right direction. Because, you know, so everybody make a mistake. But, they was going to get the bike anyway. Because we go down H Street, right? Feed the homeless, give the people from, praising, you know, talk about Jesus everything. So, they don't need steal nothing. What they should do is like, talk to their pastor. And then, the pastor can put them in the right direction. Because, you know, I was riding my auto bike. I get bikes too. So, I was riding my auto bike. I seen my bike. I said, hey, that's who's riding my bike. But, I not go up to him. And I say, hey, you know, you get my bike? No. I said, I come over here, I talk to you guys, let the authorities do the right thing. Instead of, we just go out there and say, hey, you know, you taking my bike. Now, I'm going to call my brother, and my brother going to get you guys. And then, we going to get problems, right? So, we have these natural disasters. Yeah, but right now, the problem's small. So, they stealing bikes. That's all I got to say. And then, the road, the one, when you making the turn by the donut shop, their big rigs are flipping over. If you guys notice? So, that's dangerous. Because if you stay over here coming from Moresto, and you trying to make a left turn, you got to go on this side, you going to go to Walmart. Even if you turn here, when a car's coming on Hatch, they kind of coming, kind of close. So, just let you know. And then, thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tim Martins.
Hello, I'm Tim Martins. I live at 3408 Puma Way. I've been there about 20 years. I have a halfway house next door to me, 3412 Puma Way. So, I've asked for help. I've emailed you, sir. I've emailed the previous police chiefs. And for the last 12 years, I've dealt with my vehicles being vandalized, my house being robbed. Just outside, there's feces, there's syringes, needles. And you know what? Basically, the resources from our city, the police department, the fire department, they come out there two to three times a week to take people away in ambulances or whatever. But, you know what? It's just gone too far. It's over the top. We need, our services from the city should be spent elsewhere. When they come out for these things, they should be, you should be charging the homeowner for your time and money so we can protect the rest of the city. I've just, it's over the top. I've done everything I can do. The last two police chiefs, I've gotten nowhere. I need some help.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wells, just to inform, I'm not, is the, it's not. When you, sir, if you could maybe provide the contact information for you, we can look into that a little bit more. I know on some of the halfway houses, I believe those are regulated by the state. Is that correct, Mr. Westbrook? Or, sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot. But, I know that that's what's happened in the past.
Depends on the circumstance. It may be, it may not be.
Okay.
But, we wouldn't know unless we checked.
Okay. Yeah. So, if you can give the clerk your information, we can look at it.
Actually, the past previous police chiefs, they've already done studies on how many times services been out to that house. And actually, most of the police officers come out, they shake their head and say, sorry, there's nothing we can do. I mean, so, as a citizen, I'm frustrated. If I sound frustrated, I am.
Sure.
I mean, walk in my shoes for a day in or a month and live in that house and put up with what my and my family have put up with. I will give you my contact information.
Yeah. And I can't speak to this because I don't know. But, I can tell you, in my years of sitting here on the dais, we've had homes like this that have been proposed in residential subdivision areas. And we have not wanted them to be there. But, in some cases, the state regulates that, and we have no say in that. I don't know that that's the case here. But, if you're telling me that the former police chiefs have told you there's nothing you can do, it leads me to believe that that's probably the case. But, I'm not, but we'll look into it, and we'll work with you. And we'll do whatever we can to try to help clean it up. Because you shouldn't have to deal with that.
I can tell you, I'm going to retire in six years. So, you got about six years. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
My name is Lee Brant, and I would like to thank you guys for, actually, my butt thanks you for the new chairs, because they're quite comfortable. And thank you for the monitors. We had been gone for six weeks. We're up in Yosemite. We had no cell phones, no internet, no nothing, and it was great. Coming back was a culture shock. It was totally amazing. We were there, like I said, we were there for six weeks. I was looking forward to coming home and taking a real shower and taking care of everything. And I was home for 20 minutes, and I regretted it. But, there's no place like home.
I have more of an announcement. I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday is our One Table One Community for the Series Chamber of Commerce, beginning at 6:00 with the wine stroll, dinner at 7:00. If anybody's interested, I have the flyer with me tonight. I would love to see our staff and our council there this weekend. Thank you.
Jeanie Akeley, Series. I believe it was a couple of council meetings back, I brought up something about the photos and if they were, that I could submit to code enforcement. And I believe somewhere in the past, it was either Mayor Vera or Toby Wells that mentioned something about that they could act on them even though that they weren't there if there was photo evidence of some code violations. And when you asked me, the last, Mayor Vera, when you asked me last time, I gave you the wrong thing I was asking. Do you have anything on that? Can we, can they actually use photos to cite people for code violations?
Mr. Wells, I don't believe we can. But...
Well, it completely depends on the situation. We get photos for code enforcement violations on a regular basis, and those are used as part of the investigation. The code enforcement officer regularly follows up on any photos that were given to document the case. But, it is very case-specific in terms of what can or can't be. It just depends on what the information is and what the violation is.
But, they can't use those?
Again, it's part of the case. So, it all depends on the specifics of that particular case.
But, if the code enforcement isn't there, it'd be like after the fact?
Again, it depends on the specific case.
And I'd like to know too, this has always been going on for a while. And again, Mayor Vera mentioned this. It took place in January for the sidewalk vendors. It seems like in some of our neighborhoods, we're seeing a little bit more of the sidewalk vendors on the sidewalks and stuff. And I guess the city attorney is working on that. I'd like to find out if there's any movement on that since January. So, we can try to construct something, and the council people can get going on trying to slow some of this down with some kind of health, county health issues, and food preparation, and disposal, all kinds of stuff. How's that going so far?
Basically, it's going to come down to the county health issues. We can report that, but we're not going to have much authority as a city.
So, it's going to be distributed from the county on all the cities and what they can do?
Well, I don't know what the county will do, frankly. But, we will...
That's the direction it's probably going to come from?
Yes.
Okay. And as I see some other council meetings on this famous YouTube, I think it'd be kind of nice, because the few people that do come to the council meetings, they see your names up there, but they don't know what district you're in. So, a lot of people don't know what your district is. Could we possibly get some kind of notation on some, it's going to cost money, and some new plaques that tells each district that the council members are in by their names?
I'm sure we can do that.
Great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Reino?
City Attorney, I thought we talked about this at the last meeting, that there was something that we as a city could do for permitting of the sidewalk vendors.
It's very limited, our basic...
But, we can. We can say that if there's some kind of a health or safety issue, that we can put that into our own ordinance, correct?
With the county enforcing it, basically.
With the county enforcing our ordinance?
The health and safety aspect of our ordinance. I don't think we can do individual citing in that.
Can we, can we require that they have a food permit from San Sos County? So, that could be the hammer?
That's about, that's about all we...
Yeah. But, that's a pretty big hammer. I can tell you, it's hard to get. And I would suspect a lot of these vendors that I'm seeing would not be able to get some of those things.
So, again, we as the council can implement a permit or an ordinance that would basically put a hammer on the sidewalk vendors.
Basically, what I think you'd have to do is say that they have to have a permit from the Health Department, San Sos County Health Department.
But, like I said at the last meeting, after looking at what the Assembly had passed, it looked like cities had the ability to pass an ordinance that would put limitations on them. So, it will be up to us to do that.
Well, yeah. And I would think what we would say is that they have to have a permit from San Sos County Environmental Health.
Correct.
And as a result of that, again, I'm speaking off the cuff, because I have to went through it. You have to have washing, hand washing stations, and all sorts of things that I'm sure these little carts are probably not going to have.
So, is...
I think it's most accurate to say that our limitations are very limited.
Right. But, can we, I guess we can't do it right now because it's not an action item. But, could we as a body direct the city attorney to come forward with an ordinance in that matter?
I think so.
They're already working on a presentation that we'll bring as part of the municipal code update. You'll be able to adopt that.
Okay.
Councilmember Klein?
So, our municipal code right now does not allow street vendors. So, why can't code enforcement inform the street vendor that it's not part of our, we do not allow street vendors according to our ordinance, yet not cite them, don't cite them, but just tell them that we do not allow in our city, street vendors according to our ordinance? Give them the ordinance number and be done with them, right now until something else adopt it.
Because the governor...
It's inconsistent with state law.
But, he's not citing anybody. All he's doing is saying according to the city ordinances.
It's inconsistent with state law is the challenge. It doesn't hold up.
Right.
Well, I think what you need, what we need to be informing them is that they will need to have a permit from environmental health. So, we're giving you a heads up that you need to start that process in order for you to be able to operate.
We're not alone on this challenge. This is an issue up and down the state that folks are wrestling with how to implement and be consistent with the state law, right? We didn't create this law. The state legislature created this law. And now, every city is trying to figure out how to implement this to the best of our abilities. And it is, everyone is struggling with it.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
So, okay. So, we will be addressing it. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
John Warren, Series. On that same subject, it was my understanding that the street vendors are not allowed to block the sidewalks and/or post signs. Most recently, on Hatch Road down close to Herndon, street vendors blocking over half of the sidewalk. And he has a sign posted leaning up against the city light pole. And so, I think in some of our ordinances, we have some sign rules that might be able to be used. And you're correct, up and down the state, there's a problem. There was a, I went to Santa Anuela the other day, and right there in the middle of their sidewalk is a vendor just like the one on Hatch and the one over on Mitchell. And they're blocking half of the sidewalk. I mean, you cannot get around them without having to come in contact with them. They're not using the private property there because they don't have permission from Save Mart or the shopping center down by Cost Less in that area. So, it's obviously they're encroaching upon the sidewalk. And those sidewalks aren't very wide, and the carts are blocking the sidewalk. So, what's the ruling on that blockage?
Again, it's an ADA thing too.
It's an ADA, right. It's required to have four feet clear. So, that is, the only thing we've been able to actively utilize is that, is if there's four foot clear.
So, the ones that I've seen, they don't have four feet of clear.
Correct. And our officers, both regular officers and code enforcement officers, would have the ability to enforce that aspect.
So, why are they still there?
If we had unlimited resources, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Quite a few years ago, a city, city council member passed an ordinance that you can't sell flowers up and down Whitmore. Her friend was an owner of a flower shop in the Ritzland Shopping Center. So, we can pass, it did pass, so nobody can sell flowers up and down Whitmore. That passed. So, why can't we do it for food or do it for other things? And you know what city manager, city council member it was? So, things can be done, I guess, if that happened. Nobody can sell flowers up and down Whitmore Avenue. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no one else, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 11 consent calendar items? One public hearing item or the discussion? Hearing none. We'll move to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Nine and 10.
Anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than nine and 10? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items. Move to adopt 1, 2, 3A, 4, 5AB, 6, 7, 8, and 11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item number nine, resolution number 2019-97, authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase order for the, for winter Chevrolet for the purchase of one 2020 Chevrolet Tahoe for the police department. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mr. Wells, I see where, in the specification, two of the front doors of the roof would be painted white, so I would assume that this vehicle will be for patrol?
You'll let Chief Collins?
Yes, this for a watch commander vehicle.
Okay. So then my question is, can we amend the resolution so it does say it is for patrol, so it doesn't accidentally go somewhere else? I just want to be sure that our police officers that are out on patrol get the latest vehicles that we have instead of ones that have excessive miles. And I mean, I know what it says in the specifications, but I would prefer if it says it's specifically for patrol, which would cover the watch commander, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, because he's out, or she, are out on patrol.
Okay, you can make that suggestion if you'd like.
Okay, well, I don't know if there's any other comment.
Okay, you done?
I am done.
Okay, any other council member have any comments on this item? Is there anyone in the public?
Dave Perez, Series, how come you're going to Colfax to buy this vehicle, and you can't find it locally?
I suspect it's usually with the contract that we have with the state, because we don't have a Chevy dealership in...
Hell, no.
There's no Chevy dealership in Series, so there is a procurement through the state level that provides us the best pricing and availability.
Oh, so...
There is a real challenge with a lot of these availability vehicles, so...
All right, so you're going through the, you have to go through the state and they...
That's one option, or getting bids from local vendors. We've found the state process to be, one, more cost effective and more efficient.
Okay, thank you.
John Warren, Series, why, is there a reason we're not using Department of General Services that purchases large volumes of police vehicles for the whole state of California, depending upon what each city's needs are when they submit ahead of time, and they go out and they buy these vehicles, and then the cities gain them from the Department of General Services?
Jeremy could probably speak to this further, but, one, it's long lead items, that bulk process, it takes a long time, and we generally need these vehicles a little quicker than that. But it is an option. Of the options that we have in the tool chest, one is a bid process, one is using state pricing that's already there, or the general services, those are options that we have at our disposal. We try to find the most efficient, effective way to get the vehicle as soon as we can.
So what would be a cost of a vehicle through general services, through the Department of General Services?
I don't know.
Versus winters?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. Jeremy may have a better idea of it.
They're all state contracts. They're just state contracts, they're all bidding on these, they're all, I mean, within dollars and cents of each other. We went with winter Chevrolets, because that's who we've been going through, and we get the best reaction, shall we say. We're having a really hard time, all cities up and downstate are having a hard time getting any type of police rated vehicles. We've got two that we're still waiting for from last August sort.
I just know what general services and what, that's why I asked the question, it's just an option.
Behind the wall.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution number 201997 with an amendment to include that the purchase will be for a patrol vehicle, for the use of patrol.
Second, can we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item number 10, resolution number 2019-98, approving an agreement between the Series Garden Club and the City of Series for the use of the Series Community Center in exchange for maintaining live plants. Vice Mayor Rhino?
In the staff report, it says the Series Garden Club for the regular monthly business board meetings, but when I look at the agreement, it says the use shall be conducted not more than two times per month. So is it per month, once per month, or is it two times a month? And then, it also says all monthly meetings shall be conducted on weekdays, and it shows two different windows of time. And it says, do you have the agreement there?
I do.
Okay. Under B, it says they will maintain up to four additional portable pots inside and out, but in the staff report, it says seven. So I'm not sure which it is, because the resolution says seven as well.
I know they have two meetings a month, one's a board meeting and one is a general membership meeting.
So this is for both of the meetings?
Correct.
Okay, so, maybe on the resolution, instead of it saying waive their annual reservation fee for their monthly meetings, I guess it doesn't have to say it's more than one per month, just monthly meetings, is okay? Okay.
You can make that change in the resolution, and...
Correct. And then it's, it is seven?
It is seven, yes.
It's not four? Correct?
Correct.
So the resolution is right?
Correct.
The agreement will have to be changed.
Okay, so the agreement would have to be modified?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Those are my only two questions.
Are there any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that have a question on this?
Jeanne Aiken, Series, on these, on that particular item there, the garden club, probably a lot of us don't know what garden club is in Series and what they do, probably something good. Are they taking care of all the plants in the community center, or anywhere else off of this area? And how often do they do it? And how come the people that work here can't water them, or whatever they got to do? I know sometimes you have to trim them, or whatever, or parks and recreation.
They're, you need indoor plants and outdoor plants that they maintain and potted, so that doesn't fall under preview of our parks department, so definitely they're volunteering, being a longstanding organization in the community, and that was a way of giving back to the community center.
And I think that they plant, when, if they happen to die, they plant, they bring in, they bring in the plants and they replant them.
Just for this building, right?
Correct, and the pots outside.
They've been doing it for...
Years.
Years, yeah.
What does, what do they normally pay for meetings? Because it says you're waiving their fee.
I think the fee is about thirty to forty dollars they pay each time, they'd have to pay.
At once a month?
They meet twice, up to twice a month, and they don't meet in the summer months, but they...
How many times do they...
Weekly, they come in weekly for about an hour, hour and a half.
And they charge...
They do not charge, that's part of waiving the fees, is they're not charging us anything for providing the plants and pots.
Okay, I'll look for a direction from the council.
Move to adopt resolution number 201998 with the changes made to the agreement to correspond with the resolution.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, we have no unfinished business this evening, so we have one public hearing, City of Series Municipal Code Revision Discussion. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, step two of our process in the municipal code, provide an update based on kind of our start so far and where we're at, and the changes to the schedule that we need to make reflective of the council's direction at the last meeting. So just a reminder of the titles of the municipal code, here are the nineteen numbers, there are obviously, there's a few numbers that are missing in there, number seven and eleven and fourteen, but this is the overall process that we're going through. It will likely take us around six months to get through all of these and get them adopted. So here's per council direction, back in June, a grouping of the chapters that, to make some logical sense in terms of how those chapters relate with one another, as well as breaking them up into sizes that were more manageable, I'll use that word, because it's still a large, heavy lift to get through approximately about 250 pages of code with each section of the review. So this is a revised proposed schedule for your consideration. So we originally had the first discussion scheduled for August 12th, that got pushed August 26th, as a result of those changes and the request for additional time to review the information before it comes to council. We revised the schedule so that this evening, the public hearing that was noticed for this evening, will ask council to open that public hearing and continue it to date certain, based on the direction you give us for the schedule. So, again, this is a proposed schedule, as it's shown here, that for that first group, based on the discussion that we've had so far, it would come back for a public hearing on September 23rd. And the other aspect, as we got through this whole process with the direction and the, some of the changes recommended from our city attorney, there's several items that are moving. For example, we just went through, there are several items that are in Title III that are moving to Title IV, and items in Title IV that are moving to another location. As a result of those changes, we're recommending not moving forward with the complete adoption on, with each grouping, but rather wait for the adoption at the end. Now, there's some pluses and minuses to that overall concept, but from the adoption standpoint, if we do it incrementally, it'll create a tremendous amount of work on the legal side to have cross referencing previous versions of the municipal code when we're moving items for consistency's sake between different titles. So that is reflected in the schedule as well, so...
Question? Questions? With this, doing that and not adopting it until it's completely done, does it also give us an option to go back and revisit something?
Absolutely. That was the other thing that we wanted, as we've dug through this first group, recognize if we do it this way, we have a public hearing, set that off to the side, and then as we go through, say, Group Three, we're like, hey, but remember in Group One, we made this change? Why don't we change that as well? So then when we come back through for that final effort, we'd be able to do a one more comprehensive look at everything, any cleanup, anything that maybe the council or the community said, hey, we liked that before, but we don't like that anymore. That, we felt was a better approach in the very end, to be able to have one more look at everything on a comprehensive basis, to be able to say, yes, we're good with this whole document. So we felt like that was a better approach. Still, at any point in the process where council decides, hey, we really want this to be effective immediately, we can do that, and obviously it creates some challenges on a legal perspective, but we absolutely can do that as well as we move through it.
Well, Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So, with that being said, so let's say we get into Group Three, and we want to go back and change something in Group One, any part of the ordinance, does that need to be noticed within the public for us to go back and do that? How does that work?
Yeah, so what would likely happen, so say, for example, with your example, November 26th, Group Three is having a discussion, and during that discussion, council said, hey, we would like to revisit something in Group One, then we would notice that Group One, and would likely bring it as part of the public hearing for that next group that you're talking about with, you know, Group Three and Group One. It depends on the nature, but if it's a minor change, we'd likely say, hey, why don't we just do this at the end? But it's a little more substantive, and you wanted to make some significant changes, and we'd likely bring that back for public hearing. It just depends on the specific nature of what's directed.
So if we make the change, if we make the changes, then it wouldn't necessarily, we would not go back to a public hearing until the very end?
Correct.
So my next question is, why wouldn't we do that on the next sequential meeting since we made the changes?
I'm not following you.
So if we went back to item number three, and we make the changes, we say we want to do them, when it comes to the public hearing for the group that we're on, why can't we include that into the public hearing for that, too?
Still not following you, because you were talking about changes to a previous group.
Right, so we want to, we're talking in Group Three right now, and all of a sudden, we decided we want to change something in Group One, okay?
That's what I just indicated, that we would bring Group One with Group Three, depending on the...
That's what I'm asking, why would, because you were saying bringing it towards the end.
You could do it either way. Again, it depends on what the issue is.
Okay.
For a minor change, you would, you'd do it at the end, you wouldn't need to notice it, but if the council directed us, hey, let's do it with this one, we, of course, can make that change, but just recognize that, a lot more paperwork in that particular agenda package, but we can do it either way.
Okay. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mayor Rhino?
I said vice mayor. He did say vice mayor. He did say vice mayor.
The hearing is the first thing to go. My biggest concern is that when we get into code enforcement, which we have immediate needs, that I don't want to wait another nine months or 10 months to adopt any of the changes that we make. We need, whatever changes we want to make, we need to adopt them then, instead of waiting till the very end. Because, I mean, we all know that we have issues that need to be addressed with that. I don't want to wait and do it as a lump sum.
Is code enforcement the only issue? Or, again, just the complexity of, we're trying to move things to be more efficient and more effective, and where code enforcement, for example, today, a particular item may be referenced in three different sections of the code. We'd like to clarify those and put those in the same location, so it's easier to read for everybody and easier to enforce.
Okay, because I usually read everything I get, and so if, at the very end, we're going to be adopting them all, and they're all supposed to have the changes, how many weeks will it take me to go through those to make sure that everything we talked about was actually done, instead of as we do them and we go along, well, then it's adopted and we know that we can actually start enforcing things? And I'm not talking just about code enforcement, but any of the other changes that we felt were necessary to make.
Look for council direction. Obviously, we can do that, it's quite a bit more work on the staff level, we may need to adjust the schedule again to get that done, just because of that.
Well, why would that be more work on the staff level if they've already made the changes?
Because you have to reference, with the way the changes are, as we're moving things, you have to make those references to the difference between the existing code and the new code.
Okay, which we, as a council, had a problem with anyway, because we were looking at...
And that's the difficulty, because we're moving things.
I think what he's...
And we are going to have a matrix for nine, 10, and 19, when we take those up next.
So I think what he's saying is, let's say we had something in municipal code three, for instance, and it cross referenced 14 and 19, he has to write something that deals with how we deal with those chapters today, and then they may be a different number, because it's proposed, what's in 19 today is going to be actually in 16 in the next, when we get done.
Well, but as we found out the last time, that they were moving things all over the place, that they probably didn't need to move around. Didn't you find that as well, or is it just me, that we couldn't find where things moved, and why did they move there? I don't know, I just really have a concern with code enforcement. And then I see that the Group Three, why does business license discussion belong in the same discussion with streets and sidewalks and water and sewer, or does that belong more in code enforcement? I mean, doesn't business license kind of follow code enforcement?
Business license has no regulatory function at all. Business license is purely a revenue generation.
So if someone doesn't have a business license, code enforcement doesn't go out and do anything?
It is not a regulatory action.
Okay, so it's, then it's okay that it's with streets and sidewalk?
That's, again, we picked that location just for kind of dividing up, because it is a pretty hefty section, but it can move anywhere, it's just the amount of pages and reading and trying to balance that out across those five groups.
It probably should have gone with revenue and finance.
It's 250 pages already.
Councilmember Klein? I'm in somewhat agreement with Vice Mayor Rhino, because, I mean, we're pushing everything off, and we're moving things, and we're changing dates, and yet code enforcement has been been a hot topic out here for the last year. Is there anything in there that we can't say, take code enforcement, which I believe is 19?
Yes.
When we get to 19, can we just adopt that one?
Of course. Of course.
But then don't you have the same problem that you're just talking about? But again, I don't want to wait another year to start addressing code enforcement issues.
Because your timeframe in front of me shows it goes all the way to March of two thousand and twenty, you know, when we were going to start this right after we adopted the general plan, and, you know, here we are, a year, year and a half later, and we're just now starting it. So I think that, you know, to, to work with everybody is, there are certain sections that we should adopt it as we go along. Some of them I can understand where we, we don't need to, but some of them, I think we, we need to sink our teeth into it, especially code enforcement, and adopt it. That would basically entail street vendors. You know, we can take care of that and get that, get that going and get it in place. Because after we adopt the ordinance, there's a process for that, and what's the process for that? Three months?
For adopting an ordinance?
Yeah, a month?
A month with a month lag.
So we're talking two months, two months lag?
The three-step process, public hearing, second reading at the next meeting generally, thirty days for an effective date.
So we do that, we're pushing code enforcement from March ninth, two thousand and twenty, which would be our second reading, back into April of two thousand and twenty, you know? So that's, you know, ten months from now, when we've already, I think we started this, you know, we were trying to get this thing on the docket over a year ago. So I think there are some of these we can adopt as we go along.
So do you want to make that decision this evening, or would you like to, like, for example, Group One, right, that is ready for a public hearing at the next meeting? So are any of those chapters, items, chapters one, two, three, four, six, and eight, are those, any of those you interested in adopting?
I think they're saying, if I'm hearing him correctly, and I want to put words in his mouth, as we do each section, you want, they want to adopt each section. I think as we do every section, we can, we can determine if we want to say, hey, we want to adopt...
That's what I'm asking.
Number nineteen, and, and leave the other, your pieces up there. Use the rest of the group until the end, but we want to adopt nineteen.
So Group One we've got a discussion on, the next step in the process is a public hearing.
Right.
So if I'm hearing from the council, is there an interest in adopting Group One, what we already discussed?
Well, I, I think, first of all, we need to end, end the discussion, and then someone needs to make a motion as to what they want to see, and then that will give you the direction.
Just because there's, there's a hybrid here, where we could do two groups and adopt the two groups, if that's the council's direction. So for example, under what I'm hearing, trying to find, if, if there's not a driver to adopt any of the first group, but what we could do is with Group Two, when it comes to a public hearing, adopt Group One and Group Two. That, that would be addressing a few of those issues, but at the same time, providing a little more flexibility for the implementation of those. Continuity within those chapters.
Councilmember Condit?
Sure, I would just like to echo the comments of my colleagues, I would agree with that. I think we should adopt as we go as, with pressing items that are, definitely need to be handled as soon as possible. So I would agree with that.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Are the street vendors going to be covered in code enforcement or under streets and sidewalks?
Likely would be, I would assume it's code enforcement.
Thought it was nineteen.
Yeah, I think that's where it'll live in nineteen.
Okay.
Which would be our next.
Would be our next discussion item.
Okay, you threw your presentation at the public hearing, you know?
Yeah, let's hold that thought, chew on that schedule for a little bit. There was one discussion item that we didn't talk about at the last meeting, that this council had indicated that you wanted to address, and, and we didn't get to it, so I wanted to bring this up for council. We can discuss it at the public hearing, which should be next, at the next meeting, or you can give staffs a direction to come back with some options. But that was specifically existing title six oh four oh three C. This is one for code enforcement that we cite pretty regularly, and so that section, I've just, you know, copied the portion of it that's important on waste wheelers, so your garbage cans. In the city of Series, any garbage can is required to be kept and maintained at a location upon the premises, i.e. the property, which is screened from public view. So that is one of our high-volume code enforcement issues, that that, those cans need to be either behind the fence, in the garage, or some other way screened from public view. So public view being somebody on the sidewalk, walking, not able to see your garbage can. So that is one that is a very high volume of complaints. We've had folks here approach the council and ask for some lenience on that. As the code's written today, there's, it's pretty clear, so.
I, I personally think that we should have a little bit of a discussion on it, and I would suggest that you bring some photographs that illustrate what you're talking about, so that we can provide a direction on this, unless the council feels that there's a cut and dry answer that we can give them. But I, I don't know that it's a, just a five-minute discussion, but...
And that's, I don't bring it up just for, just, you know, getting the thought percolated. Again, the public hearing is when we would be able to make, I mean, we could bring changes at the public hearing if you like, but I wanted to bring that up, because we didn't have that discussion last time, and I didn't want this section to be a surprise at the public hearing, because obviously it has had some discussion in the past.
Councilmember Condit?
My question on that is, will that be proactive or complaint-driven, dealing with trash cans?
Currently, it's...
It's complaint-driven.
Complaint-driven, generally when we get a complaint of our garbage can in a particular neighborhood, what we like to do, the general process, is handing out a flyer to the whole neighborhood.
Sure.
So we try not to just single out one individual if the whole neighborhood is doing the same thing. So that general process starts with a flyer or a notice that says, hey, in case you didn't know, your garbage cans need to be screened from public view.
Sure.
So that starts the process, then of course, if there's twenty people in our neighborhood, fifteen of them will, will get it, five of them won't, and then we'll go down the process of...
Of course, I'm just using Mr. Donaldson as an example, that he brought that to the council a couple of meetings ago, that his trash can was out, but so were his neighbors, and so he felt he was being picked on.
Correct, and that's why we try to handle it in that direction, but yeah, the code section doesn't refer to the approach in dealing with violations of violation, how you get to that. Generally, with the current staffing level, is, is primarily reactive rather than proactive.
Complaint, okay.
Yeah, it is complaint-driven for the most part.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments before I open it up, or you're not done yet, or?
Almost.
Okay.
So, so really, all that we need this evening is a decision on schedule for Group One. So for Group One, because the public hearing was scheduled for this evening, so we need, you can take comment, but we'll need to continue the public hearing to date certain, what we would recommend that being September twenty-third for Group One. And then need some direction from you in terms of the schedule for building the rest of it. I'll put it back on the schedule for your...
Okay. Good?
Good.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing, have anyone like to speak on this item?
John Warren Sherris. I don't know if I'm supposed to speak on just Group One.
That, that's all we're talking about right now, and, and whether we're going to, you know, adopt the new schedule as of here.
It had to do with adopting the schedule, and it had to do with code enforcement being taken care of at one time. But there are some sections that code enforcement is involved in, the codes that will eventually be changed. And my question was, when they, when you deal with code enforcement, are you going to deal with all of the ordinances that code enforcement would be involved in together, when you, when we do code enforcement?
So what they're proposing to do, or there's two options. One is, we go through all of them and adopt them at the same time, or the discussion is, let's say there's code enforcement and it touches five different sections, they'll have to address how it addresses those five sections as they are today, and then how it will be in the future, because we haven't adopted those other sections, and so you can't do that, because those sections may never get adopted if something were to happen. So that's the dilemma that they have, is, is which way do we want to go? And so we have to give direction on that upcoming here.
My thought would be to do it as Vice Mayor Rhino suggested, and do them on an individual basis, rather than waiting to the end.
Correct, and that's what we'll find out.
This is going to be about a twenty-hour project for me to come up here on this code enforcement for my houses and that garbage cans, and the garbage cans around me and everything else. It's going to be a long discussion, because I've got three houses right there together, and I'm roofing a house, and I'm remodeling a house, and I've got a construction out on it, and they come by and they say, your, your garbage cans are out there. Well, of course, they're out there. I'm putting OSB wood, and I'm putting sheet rock, and I'm putting, Rob and Eric Ingerson, they even drove by. And so I had to put a fence up. They didn't like my fence, but I put a fence up so they couldn't see my stupid garbage cans. And my garbage cans are in between my motor home and my wife's car, backed up. Wrong, it is wrong, but it's a lot better than this one out here that you people have. It, 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 it's, the houses now are so close together, that you put your garbage can there, you have to take the garbage can out, go in your backyard, come back through, put your garbage cans back there, and close the door. We're putting the, the houses too close together, we're putting the roads too close together for the convenience of the city. We've got to come out, because I'll put a, I'll put a deal like you did out here right in my front yard, so you can't see my garbage can. I'll build something right in my front yard, so you can't see my garbage can. The blue one, you can't see, because it's in my backyard, that never comes out. So this is, this is a big deal. You want me to put my garbage can in the back, I'll get it back there. But I want everybody up and down the corner, everybody around the block, I want them to do the same thing. So let's not make it for one person, let's make it for everybody. And the code enforcement is really giving me a bad time, and he knows it, and everybody else knows it. I'm probably getting one now for being up here, okay? But it's just like my garage in the back, people come up there and they steal things out of it, and they bring things forward, and then I get in trouble for it. I've worked my, I've worked my, I've worked my tail end off all my life to have something. I have two motor homes, but they're on different properties, and I have ATVs, and they're, they're mine. And this is what an old timer told me one time, if you don't like what's on that street, go down the other one. If you don't like this woman, don't look at her. And that's the way I feel, it's my home, I paid for it, it's mine. What I look at is, is me. Beauty is in the eyes of the beholder, remember that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council, look for direction.
City attorney with the, before he closes the public hearing, we need to continue it to date certain, right?
So we recommend to continue this to the twenty-third.
We noticed it for this date, and we'll miss the noticing date for the next date if we don't continue it to date certain.
We can still discuss the other items after that.
Correct, but if we could get continuation to...
So you just want direction on whether we're continuing it or not?
Well...
We need a motion to continue.
We need a motion to continue for this public hearing that is currently open for Group One.
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Group One to September twenty-third.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, and we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
So we could continue discussing, if you want to provide any other direction, we can do that, but we can bring that information on the twenty-third as well. So it's your, your discretion, in terms of the overall schedule for Group, really what affects the...
Does someone, I mean, it depends, do you guys want to have a discussion, or you want to make a motion? It sounds like you guys are ready to, to adopt them individually as they come available. Well, my question was, Group Two, number nineteen is code enforcement.
Nine, ten, and nineteen is what's in Group Two.
Okay, correct. But nineteen is code enforcement.
Correct.
So if we just want to adopt code enforcement, nineteen, we can do that?
Correct.
Okay.
However, I...
Well, that's what he's looking for direction on.
I have to caution you, there's...
That's what I'm saying.
Code enforcement crosses over into a lot of other sections as well. What code enforcement enforces is in eighteen, as well as ten, and as well as nine. So there are areas in those, for example, Chapter Ten with vehicles, abandoned vehicles and those type of things, that is something, something that is subject to code enforcement enforcement. So there's, there's aspects of each title that are, that are different between what exists today and what's being proposed.
Well, and if eighteen has something to do with code enforcement, then why is it all the way at the end and on...
So eighteen is the zoning code. So that deals with all development, the entire development of all, all things city. That is the largest chapter and very, very significant. That's where signage lives, that's where all of the rules about advertising, all of that lives in that location.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Is it possible, after we've had our discussion on nine, ten, and nineteen, to make a decision then that we want to go ahead and, and we'll have our public hearing, and then immediately we want to adopt one of those?
And you could choose, we just want to worry about adopting...
We don't have to make that decision tonight.
Don't have to make it tonight, exactly. I'm planting the seed for conversation.
We need to ask that question.
I did ask that question, I did ask it. I said, so if we don't want to do nine and ten, we can do nineteen, I did ask that question.
So you could give that direction, easiest for us, if you gave the direction at the discussion, so that we could, you know, make the adjustments for noticing purposes and scheduling for the public hearing, the second reading, and the adoption.
Okay, I make that motion.
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Condit.
Just so that I understand, what, what is the motion?
The motion is that we're going to go on each of these groups, and then during our discussion of whichever chapters are in that group, we can decide then if we want to have them all be adopted at the same time, or if we want to pick one out and say, we want that to be adopted sooner than the others, the others.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
No.
Motion passes three one.
Okay, we have no new business, so we will move to our one discussion item, the community center operations.
Thank you, Mayor. Myself and Mr. Lore will jointly present this. I'll start off the conversation, Mr. Lore will get into kind of the middle of it, and then I'll, I'll finalize the, I look for a council direction. So the community center, the building that we're currently occupying, just as a refresher, the last conversation we had really about this was in two thousand and sixteen, where we looked at this in depth. But going further back, before this building was even thought about, there was three studies that were done, the original feasibility study in two thousand and one, then an economic analysis on its viability, whether it can generate enough revenue and manage expenses to be operational in two thousand and five. And then once the plans were pretty well finished, construction was underway, the operation study was done in two thousand and eight. So important to note that each one of those studies concluded that for this center to operate, there was some level of general fund subsidy required. Each study had a little different number, depending on grants, depending on operations, and a number of other factors, but there was always intended to be some level of general, general fund subsidy in the operation of this facility. So the last study, which is what was used, is setting the framework for the operation, indicated about seventy-two thousand dollars per year from the general fund to balance revenues and expenditure for this building. It wasn't clear at what point in the operation that you would get to that seventy-two thousand dollar number. It was a pretty ambitious study, so it was assumed to be a little sooner in the process than, than what we saw operationally, of course. No one anticipated the largest recession this country's ever seen either, right in the middle of when we opened the facility, which opened in two thousand and nine. So about ten years of history that we've been operating the facility. With that operation study, it indicated operating the facility with the enterprise method, from an accounting perspective, meaning all the costs were handled in the fund, two seventy-five, revenues, expenditures in two seventy-five, and to, to capture all of those in its own fund, which from that original study was allow it to go negative, with the idea that ultimately it'll get too close to balanced with a general fund subsidy needed at some point in the future. So based on two thousand and sixteen, that we continued that same approach to get to where we are today. today. So, here's the actual financials for Fund two seventy-five with each year, so you can kind of see, two thousand and nine was only a partial year, so not much in revenue or expenditures. Two thousand and ten, as the footnote at the bottom indicates, there's a little bit of anomaly there on the revenue side because there was property that was sold that was shown as revenue of three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, so skews that number a bit, just for reference purposes. Otherwise, you can see the revenues relatively consistent but increasing, you know, starting two thousand and eleven around that hundred and fifteen thousand dollar number, dropped a little bit, economy obviously wasn't great, and then we started to see a, a little better numbers the last couple of years in that hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar range. Expenditures, quite a bit of variance there, we've tried a number of different ways of maintaining the center, from having custodial staff in-house, contract back in-house, contract back in-house, trying to find different ways to find the most efficient way to maintain the property, also reflective of other repairs, maintenance, things, particular years, certain things break, so you'll see a pretty significant variation in expenditures there. So, all in all, as we finished the last fiscal year, again, unaudited numbers, so these are the best numbers that we have to date but not audited, we came pretty close to being balanced for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, which ended on June thirtieth, but again, caution that those are unaudited numbers, but within three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, but again, the expenditures were relatively low, lowest that we've seen on, in the history of the, of the operation of the facility. So, with the budget as you approved on June tenth, showed a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar deficit between the revenue, with the approved contract with Big Valley Grace, updated those numbers just to show with that budget amendment, again, based on our estimate, where we stand on the current fiscal year nineteen, twenty, with an expectation of a negative, of a deficit of about fifty-two thousand within the facility for the current fiscal year. What's not included in there is the fee increases that the council adopted here recently. So, our estimate at that point in time was for the community center operations, about four thousand dollar revenue increase with that, so, but didn't feel comfortable enough, you know, in that number at this point, but, but the math relatively simple, fifty-two to forty-eight in that range for the current fiscal year. So, that's where we stand on an annual basis as, as in terms of the annual deficit, and then on the bottom there, you can see the negative fund balance in two seventy-five, which is right around one point six million dollars. So, as I indicated, the, the rental fees were increased in an effort to offset that deficit. We are currently in the last year of the lease that associated with the computers that are in the computer lab, which gives us an opportunity as well, and so, under that concept, we're looking at repurposing that computer lab to try and find some operational areas to reduce an expenditure that's about fifteen thousand dollars a year on the, those computers, and then also have another revenue generation opportunity there. So, with that, I will turn it over to Matt for the next couple of slides.
Just to give you a little detail about the rentals we've had in the past fiscal year, we've seen a slight uptick over fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, but we had a, a total of a hundred and nineteen rentals that were from the public use, they could have been on what we call tier one and tier two rentals. We had eighty-seven rentals outside, again, for the small assembly, and our meeting rooms, we had a hundred and thirty-six rentals. On the other side, we have our partners, we call them, or internal rentals that include the school district, the guarding club, which you approved agreement tonight, and we saw forty-five rentals of the large assembly room, eighty-two of the small assembly, and two hundred and fifteen of the meeting rooms, which most healthy room used was the conference room by city staff. Kind of, how do we go forward in programming? I think we're very fortunate with the BBG contract, it gave us some audiovisual improvements, so we're starting to see businesses come back in and be able to attract them, that we have the AV and the technology needed. So, really, the large assembly is, our staff's going to be focused Monday to Friday of filling in with more businesses, outreach to the local large manufacturing businesses we're seeing come in. For the small assembly, it's used most Mondays, but also, this is another room rented, I think, on the weekends it can be rented for parties, but during the week, we want to see more business use. So, we go upstairs to our programming wing, I call it, and I'll head back downstairs in a minute, is, we have our meeting room, which is the top room up there, we're seeing a lot of meetings with Rotary or city staff, but also adding more rentals for parties, private parties, small parties for baby showers on Friday and Saturday, we're seeing an uptick in during the week, just more business meetings. We have our fitness room, which is pretty primarily used for fitness, our arts and crafts room, and we also rent the other room to Big Valley Grace, and the last room is the classroom, which is similar to the meeting room. We're moving forward with the computer lab, but we, we're looking at additional programming in that room, and that will hopefully increase our rentals. We're really going to be focused, you know, weekdays for businesses, holiday rentals, around the Christmas time, we've seen more and more businesses come in lately to do their holiday party here, outreach to local nonprofits, having meetings here, and county and regional trainings, we're seeing the county come in and rent the building multiple times during the year and reaching out to all the departments at the county.
Thank you. So, with where we're at in the current fiscal year, what our, our recommendation at this point would be with, with this, during this fiscal year, we'd end the use of the computer lab, repurpose that room for revenue generation in the enterprise accounting method so that the expenditures of the community center for next fiscal year would be included in the general fund. We would recommend that being a separate line item in the general fund, so right now, the recreation department is Department fifty-five, so right now, the general fund for recreation is one hundred and fifty-five. We would likely create a number there as well, so we would still be able to track the expenses associated with the community center, but it would be inside the general fund rather than a separate standalone fund account. And then, the la- the last piece of this would be looking for council direction on dealing with the accumulated debt, the one point six million dollars that is currently in Fund two seventy-five, and how you'd like us to address that debt. Is there a timeframe, a particular approach that you feel is appropriate, and what kind of parameters you would like us to bring back for action to deal with that debt? That'll, look for any direction you may have.
All right, are there any questions of staff? Councilmember Klein?
Ms. Dean, with creating that extra accounting for, accounting, would it be easier to track it and would it be acceptable for the finance department?
I think it's more in line with what it should have been done from the beginning. Recreation is a function of the general fund, and it belongs in the general fund, so when we talk about our general fund expenditures, we also need to pay attention to that negative balance we have sitting out, out there because that is a debt per se of the general fund. Moving it into the general fund, we would create another department so that we could still have that expenditure tracked more accurately, and then we would be able to keep the revenues grouped together too, so we can do an honest comparison of the community center revenue and community center expenditures. The thing that I'm waiting for is the auditor to weigh in on letting that negative balance sit out there in that fund, and how he feels we should treat it right now, what he does is he rolls it into our general fund in the audit so that it's accurately represents our general fund, fund balances, but in our books per se, it's, it's not in there.
So, you see no problem with...
I, I've been advocating for this for several years.
All right, next, next thing is, I'm looking at history. So, my question is, actuals two sixteen, two thousand and sixteen to seventeen, our expenditures went down ninety thousand, from seventeen to eighteen, our expenditures went down about eighty thousand, so that's expenditures went down a hundred and fifty thousand in two years, actuals in two nineteen went down a hundred and fifteen thousand, for expenditures went down two hundred and sixty-five thousand in three years, and I'm just rounding up numbers, and yet, you're budgeting for two thousand and twenty expenditures to go up a hundred and eighteen thousand, okay? And yet, with Big Valley Grace, that's an additional number of twenty-two thousand, so with us renting the facility out to Big Valley Grace, why would our expenditures go up twenty-two thousand if we're recouping our cost?
So, the revenues went up eighty thousand, the expenditures went up twenty thousand, the net was sixty.
But it shows, if you look at the estimated, it shows that, you know, the difference between expenditures in budgeted for twenty...
The revenues increase?
I'm, I'm, I'm saying expenditures, I'm saying expenditures.
I'm showing you how, how you get to that number, there's an expenditure because of staff being able to manage that contract. When we approved that contract, the council approved a budget amendment, so the numbers here are the budget amendment that council approved with the award of that contract. So, there was an increase in expenditures and an increase in revenues, the net difference was sixty thousand dollars.
Ms. Dean? I'm sorry.
I'd just like to add that there was also a shifting of the allocation between the community center and the general fund for the staff costs, and then we had some departures, and so, the people who came in and replaced were paid at a lower rate, and the staff costs were significant in the changes that were made.
Thank you.
That's the difference between nineteen and twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Councilmember Condit?
Sure, and I do agree with Ms. Dean that this should be reflected in the general fund, I think it's the most honest representation of our general fund, and my motion from the budget meeting still stands that I would suggest that the council consider relinquishing its health care in order to pay for a community center, and we can do that over a ten-year plan if possible.
Okay, are there any other comments before I open up? Any public comments? All right, this time I'll open up to the public, does anyone like to comment on this item?
Just with the community center and the Legion Hall, I'm a member of the American...
Can you state your name for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, Shawna Morris, City of Series, I'm a member of the Legion Hall. We use the hall a couple of times a month, every time we come in there, we clean our tables, we're removing staples, another previous group will be in there the day before, or maybe the weekend before, and they leave it a mess. Are you guys taking their deposits away? We're pulling gums out, we're steam cleaning those tables, we're cleaning the floor. It was last week, whoever had the hall last left four twenty-gallon or twenty-pound bags of ice in the refrigerator, so it melted and filled up the bottom. Unfortunately, we had no access to the janitorial stuff because they locked the mop in the JC closet in the main room that we don't have a key for, so we had to bring in our own stuff, shop backs and clean it up. Are you guys recouping any costs for this? Because every time we get the hall after somebody else has had it, it's disgusting, and I mean disgusting.
Have you communicated that to staff at all?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, best, if you can get with Matt, we can deal with that specifically on those issues.
And we do hold people's deposits when there's damage and stuff.
Because there was blood all over the cabinets last week.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. So, it, the, the questions you're asking are, are we good with the recommendations that you have here for the computer lab and, and creating the, the separate funding within the general fund, and then a direction as to the timeframe and approach for paying down the debt?
Correct, our staff recommendation is to do all of these changes with budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, so as part of our budget next year, we would accomplish this, but likely look for additional action on how to deal with the debt piece...
Okay.
On what kind of timeframe and what other parameters you may be interested in.
So, let's, let's start with the first one, is everyone okay with the recommendation of the computer lab and the repurpose?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Okay, I'm okay with that as well. Okay, moving and creating a separate line item within the general fund to end the enterprise accounting, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
It's not a line item, it's going to be its own department.
It'll be a department.
It's going to be its own department.
Yes, yes.
I'm okay with that as well. Okay, the timeline for, and the, and the approach for dealing with the debt, and what are you recommending?
So, at this point, we didn't have a recommendation because it just depends on what council's appetite for that is, we also, as Ms. Dean indicated, you know, we've got to caution that, you know, we need our auditor to weigh in on what's acceptable from his perspective as well, and the auditor that we currently have, we will be doing an RFP for a new auditor, so there could be a potential for an auditor to have a different opinion, I just have to give that caution...
It's fine.
That, that may be, but at this point, you know, it took us ten years to get to this level, ten years would be one option, but at the same level that we look for council direction, what the parameters are, if it's, if it's five, anything can be dealt with, it's just, it'll have budget impact, and that's why we're recommending doing it as part of the budget so that you can make those decisions weighing the other priorities that you face to with the budget process.
My suggestion would be the, a, a ten-year timeframe, because at that point, we're looking at, what, about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand a year? I mean, I don't want to get us in a situation where, you know, where we've been with the reserves not being enough to where we're waiting from the, the check to come in from the county in order to be able to not have to borrow from our other funds to make the paychecks to our employees, so I think, you know, that's, I think, you know, at, at a ten-year, ten percent, that's, I can live with that.
Well, and I think, once it's going to start showing as part of the general fund, I think it helps us overall make decisions about the entire budget. So, I would agree with you.
Mike?
I agree.
I'm, I agree with the ten-year timeframe.
Okay, all right, is that all you're looking for?
That's all we're looking for, unless council wants to provide, you know, any other direction, otherwise, this will come back as part of the budget for next fiscal year, as long as we're comfortable. Just want to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
Nothing. Nothing.
Okay, hearing none, um, well, Ms. Dean, anything? Oh, well, you know what, did, I didn't, sorry, let's move to councilmember reports, and then I'll go to staff. Uh, councilmember Klein?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Condit?
Yes, I, I hold my office hours here at the community center every Saturday between twelve and two, so I hope to see you there.
Okay, and I have nothing to report, so, Ms. Dean? Tom?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Just one item, the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance continues to meet on a monthly basis, next meeting is on Wednesday, I will be attending, I understand the mayor will not be able to attend, and also, as was mentioned this evening, with National Preparedness Month for emergencies, we did put a news feed on our website and information on the fire, fire department's website on, you know, the preparedness aspect of emergencies, so just want to bring that to people's attention.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, Brandy Meyer mentioned the one table, one community dinner, what she didn't mention was that they're advanced tickets, so go to the chamber office or buy them on the website.
Okay, Daniel? Mr. Collins?
Yes, I just wanted to announce, some of you may have seen on social media that Sergeant Jason Cooley recently graduated from the Sherman Block Leadership Institute, which is an eight-month intensive leadership development program, so I'm proud of him for that, that will bring dividends to our department, and currently Sergeant Keith Gribble is undertaking the same program.
Okay, Mr. Wise?
Just wanted to remind everybody that this Wednesday will be the nine eleven memorial, the American Legion Series plus four ninety-one will be holding a ceremony at eight-thirty AM at Whitmore Park. Also, the same day, myself and some firefighters from Series will be in Sacramento for the nine eleven memorial climb at the Renaissance Tower, and we do have some fire activity going on around the state, we currently do not, we are not committed to any strike teams, we do have one strike team out of Stanislaus County at the Walker Fire up near Quincy, bless you, but as of right now, we haven't sent any resources out of our department. And last week, myself and Chief Collins met with members of the Sikh community. Thank you, thank you.
Matt? You're good. Bettina? I don't see her. Jeremy, is he still here? Hiding back there? Nothing, okay. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, September twenty-third at six PM. Thank you.